Hey John, greetings.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
Hey Neil.
Hey, hello. Just hiding up my environment. Make way for the documents.
Yes.
Hey Sylvia.
Hi there, I could just fix my background so I'm not at work anymore.
Hi Sylvia.
Hi John, how are you?
Great, thank you.
I was the music conference yesterday, or the music concert. Sylvia went to an interesting concert, I think.
Oh yes, I went to see Sir John, Elton John, yesterday.
Wow.
Yeah, supposedly his last concert in the Bay Area.
Oh wow.
Yeah, he said his last concerts in July, he wants to spend, he's seventy-five. He looks great, seventy-five years old, and he's still
It's amazing.
putting on an amazing show.
I saw him like in nineteen eighty-two or something.
It was my first and only time seeing him, so I also saw Prince during the Purple Rain, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know, they were pretty comparable, I mean, they were just both very great concerts, you know.
Great performers.
They sure are.
Yeah.
Hey Sylvia, this is Bert Sandow, are you talking about Elton John?
Yes, I was there last night.
I was there Saturday.
Oh, I have friends over there Saturday as well, it seemed like it was just I loved how he just, I don't even think he took any breaks, you know, he just kind of started off with betting the jets and just kind of continued on.
Yeah, amazing.
Great.
Amazing performer.
Sure was, yeah, sure is.
Alright, I'm gonna mute, so I don't bother you guys.
Harry, do you know if Commissioner Moore is here today with us?
Commissioner Moore will not be at the meeting this evening.
Okay, she will not be here, okay, so it looks like we have Commissioner Murphy, so we have enough commissioners and staff is all joined. Is Noah with us tonight, or Autumn?
Both.
Noah is, yes, Noah is joining us and I am here. He's having some technical challenges.
Okay, so maybe we'll wait a few minutes for Noah to join us.
We know all about those, things seem to happen regularly, I rebooted my systems to make sure.
Oh, I see Noah. Okay, so Noah's on there, it's bottom bus, hi Noah.
Is he, I don't, we see him on the participants list.
Well, he's listed as Autumn Bus, I see Noah's fate, yeah, he's
Yeah, thank you, we had some issues, I couldn't get in through my invite, I'll see if I can get another one going, but I'm in the meeting now, if you all want to get started.
I see, okay, that was me twice, okay, got it.
Okay, so it looks like we have everyone to start, so we'll call to meet, the meeting of, a special meeting of the Planning Commission, we'll call it to order. Can we get a roll call please?
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Savage?
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Here.
Chair Lemus?
Here.
And we're showing Commissioner Moore is absent this evening.
Okay, thank you, and then we'll move to the approval of the minutes, I'm not sure if the commissioners were able to review them, and if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the minutes?
So we've got Monday, May the sixteenth, twenty twenty, and we need three people. So they could be myself, John and Brittany, and I'll make a move to move, approve the minutes of Monday, May the sixteenth.
A second.
Can I ask a question of staff, for the sixteenth, it shows that Commissioner Savage is away. Can he participate in a vote for it if he was away?
Commissioner Savage, did you watch the video?
I did, that was the one on the Katari Hotel. Yeah.
So then you are able to participate, yep.
Thank you, okay. Okay, so we have a first and a second, can we get a roll call on that?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes.
Okay, and the next one is Monday, September nineteenth, the minutes of September nineteenth, and it shows that Commissioner Savage and Murphy were absent, but did they watch the video, are you guys able to vote on this tonight?
I did not watch that one.
I did not watch the video.
Okay, so since there's two of us, we may need to move this one into the next meeting. And then we'll ask if either Commissioner Brittany, Murphy, or Commissioner Savage can watch the video, but maybe if Commissioner Moore is here at the next meeting, we can move that one forward.
Yes, I can review it before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, okay, so we're gonna move forward to September nineteenth to the next meeting for review and approval, and we'll go to the next item, which is changes to the agenda. Have there been any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Chair Lemus.
Thank you. And what about oral and written communications, any oral and written communications?
Autumn, I believe we received one comment after the agenda was published, is that correct?
Yes, we received a letter from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife as a comment on the SEQA document for the Sandell Warehouse Building Two.
But my understanding is that we will address that one on a different item down a little further, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so then that moves us to the next item, which is matters at hand, and we have a review of two resolutions for the Sandell Warehouse. And do we have a presentation on that?
Yes, I'll be providing the presentation, we have a PowerPoint which will be up momentarily, there it is. Okay. So, this item is review, consideration of a use permit and design review, as well as SEQA approval, that's an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the Sandell Warehouse Building Two. We have a picture of that proposed project right here on the front. Before we get started, I just want to thank the members of the Planning Commission for making yourselves available for this special meeting tonight. We have been working hard to accommodate the SEQA process for this project, and that's a time-sensitive process, as you know. And we're also working to accommodate the developers' need to move the project forward in a timely fashion to avoid costly delays on the project, so again, thank you very much. My presentation will be followed by a presentation by the applicant, which may cover, will cover more of the details of the project than I will. Okay, next slide, please. So, the project is proposing the construction of a new warehouse and storage building, we're calling it Building Two. The building will be thirty-five thousand five hundred square feet in size, and the project also includes outdoor storage, parking, and landscaping. The building is located on, will be located on the western portion of a property at three eighty Blojet Street, and that's an eight, eight and, almost eight and a half acre parcel. It was previously vacant, so grassy field, as you most likely know, there is, Building One is under construction currently, and that is the same developer, similar warehouse, outdoor storage, in fact, both buildings are proposed to be occupied by the same tenant, the Pods Moving and Storage Company, Pods being the portable on-demand storage, and we'll have some pictures of those later. The project, because on the western side of the site is further from the street, it will be served by internal driveways that are coming from a new cul-de-sac that will be constructed as part of Building One, actually, at the terminus of Blojet Street. The zoning for the site is commercial industrial, and that is applied to areas that are appropriate for a mixture of retail, service, large-scale office, light industrial uses, warehousing, and live-work units, so this project fits right in with what's allowed by the zoning, it does require a use permit. Next slide, please. So here's, let's take a look at the project location, so as you can see, the project on the map on the left side shows that we're looking at the northwest portion of the city, it's really right at the city limit. The site was formerly addressed of five ninety-seven Hellman Lane, and subsequently, the project has gotten a new address, so now it's three eighty Blojet Street, so you you may have known it, and its previous incarnation is five ninety-seven Hellman. The project site is outlined in blue there on the right, and you can see that the site really is surrounded by light industrial type uses along the northern and eastern sides, and that's all part of the CI zoning within Katari. On the west side, all those, the fields that you see there, that's actually unincorporated county, and there's a pocket of unincorporated county to the south as well, which is zoned agriculture and residential. Okay, next slide, please. And we'll look a little closer at the vicinity of the project there, so, so as you can see, this is a big linear site, we're talking about the western portion, which is up there in the corner, towards the corner where it's labeled Washo Creek. Just next to the word site on the, on the screen there is where the cul-de-sac is going to be at the end of Blojet Street, and actually, site, the word site is kind of sitting where Building One is going to be, so Building Two will be off on the, to the left side and up. That complex that's just on the sort of southwestern corner is the Vector Control District. Okay, so that's what, that's sort of their, their offices and, I don't know, corporation yard there. Okay, next slide, please. So this is looking at the layout on the site, so again, Building One there on the right-hand side is already under construction. Make sure you have the walls up out there now, and then Building Two will be there on the left-hand side or the western side. And what you can see, more or less, here around the building is areas of the outdoor storage in addition to parking. So on the outer periphery, on the north and east sides of the building, there's primarily parking and driveway. In between the two buildings is an area that is used for outdoor storage, and then on the far-left side over there, we also have another outdoor storage area. And you can also see on the site plan here that there are areas of seasonal wetland on the site, and other areas that will be kind of left undisturbed and left as, you know, kind of, kind of open areas, and the developer will talk a little bit more about that and sort of the, the biological aspects of the site. If you look at the picture on the bottom there, you can actually see, looking from the south, looking at the building, you can see those red and white boxes, those are the, so that's a you know, a visualization of what the pod storage containers will look like, and because, and this is true with the Building One project as well, because those, those pod storage containers will be, you know, they'll be projecting up above the fence there, which is about eight feet high. The, the trees are being put in there, you can see the landscaping, the line of trees that's going to be there to help obscure the view of the pods from neighboring properties, as well as from Hellman Lane to the south. The pods will be stacked up to three high, and each pod is eight feet high, so, so this, we're talking twenty-four feet, which will be partially screened by the fence, and then additionally screened by the trees that'll be planted on the site. Next slide, please. Okay, and here we have some of the pods, you may have seen these before. Folks put their, their belongings into the pod, well, the pod is deposited in their driveway, they put their belongings into it, and then the truck picks up the pod and brings it to the storage facility, and typically, people, well, I think, I believe the applicant will talk a little bit more about this, but people are typically using the pods for moving, so then their pods are shipped, trucked elsewhere, and deposited at other pods facilities and other, other new locations. Okay, next, next slide, please. Okay, and here's more of the pods, and you can see how they stack here in this picture. Okay, next slide, please. So coming back to the zoning for, oh, I'm sorry, the general use, land use designation for the site, so that's also commercial industrial, and according to the, the general plan, that land use designation is for areas that are appropriate for industrial parks, research and development, food processing and preparation, manufacturing, laboratories, incompatible, commercial uses. Okay, so that's all of that surrounding area around the site. Next slide. And the zoning is commercial industrial, as I, as I described earlier, and that's applied to areas where there, it may be appropriate for a mixture of retail, service, large-scale office, light industrial uses, warehousing, and live-work units. The storage warehouse inside storage land use is specifically allowed in the CI zoning with a use permit. Okay, next slide. The CI zoning sets several standards, we'll just look at a few of these and how the project fits within those. The front setback that's required in CI is twenty feet, this project, because it's on a long skinny side and has another building on the other side of it, it's, it's proposed to be two hundred and thirty-eight feet back from, from the front of the property, the side setbacks that are required are zero, and this project will be varying between thirty-nine and sixty-seven feet from the, the side property lines. The rear setback is thirty feet, and in this case, the, the building will have a two hundred and seventy-foot setback. The maximum height in the zone is forty feet, and this project is coming in at forty feet. The parking requirement would require thirty-six spaces and thirty-seven are proposed, and that's for cars, there is also some bicycle parking being provided on the site as well, right, next to the building entrance. Next slide. So more on the building design, again, the applicant will, will discuss the design in more detail, so this is looking at the building, the top picture is looking at the building from the east. You can see the, the loading docks there, which will be used to access the pods, more of the landscaping, flanking the, the building. On the lower side, we're looking at the south elevations, so what you might see from the mosquito and vector control district or Hellman Lane, looking in at the building from the south. Then you can see some of the storage pods shown on the right side, which will be in the area between Buildings One and Building Two. Next slide. So, the, the approval of this project involves a few different actions. One is the use permit to allow the uses on the site, the moving and storage company, as well as the outdoor storage of the portable storage containers. Design review, in this case, preliminary and final design review, which encompasses the site plan, the building itself, as well as the landscaping that's being proposed around the project. The environmental review is also included in tonight's review by the Planning Commission, and this project required an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. And the mitigation monitoring and reporting program is part of that, and those mitigations are describing what needs to happen throughout the development and ongoing operation of the, the project to reduce environmental to reduce environmental, any any impacts to a below significant level. That review period for that document was September eighth through October eighth. So just concluded, and we did receive a comment, which I will go into in just a moment. Most notable among the mitigations is that the project is in the California Tiger Salamander habitat area. And so an incidental take permit is required. The developer has been working on that, and that needs to be procured before any grading or construction can take place on the site. Okay, next slide, please. So as I said earlier, we did receive one comment on the document from the on the environmental document from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They also, incidentally, they also noted the inclusion of a mitigation related to California Tiger Salamander that an incidental take permit be be obtained. And, you know, just confirming that that is a requirement on their part. The specific comment was to to make two revisions to a mitigation measure related to biology and biological impacts on the site. One was to increase the nesting bird surveys to an area of five hundred feet from the project site. It was previously proposed at two hundred and fifty feet. Similarly, the Department of Fish and Wildlife requested to require avoidance buffers of five hundred feet from any nests that might be found on the site during those surveys. And previously, the that buffer was was proposed at two hundred and fifty feet. Okay, so that draft IS MND and the MMRP had both been revised to reflect that comment. And in looking at the sequel law, that comment does not trigger any new impacts. And so we are not required to recirculate the document. So we can, we can revise and move forward. The count, the resolution that is being provided to the commission tonight to adopt the secret document has been updated to reflect finding related to to this this comment and its inclusion in the draft document. That concludes my presentation. Oops, I'm sorry, it doesn't, I have a recommendation. Okay, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing and adopt resolutions adopting a mitigated negative declaration and approving a use permit and preliminary and final design review to allow the construction of Sandell Warehouse Building Two, a new warehouse to be used by a moving and storage company. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant, Bert Sandell, and his team are available this evening. And Bert will be making a presentation at this now. Or if you prefer to ask some questions of me, if there are specific questions related to my presentation, we could also go that way now or or save the questions until after Mr. Sandell's presentation.
Thank you. I think it might be a good idea, since I see Vice Chair Commission, Vice Chair Hancock. So it might be a good place to stop and ask some questions before we go to Mr. Sandell. So Vice Chair Hancock, do you have a question?
Yes, hello. So just two questions really to staff. Really, one related to the context of where this is and the surrounding area on how vehicles might be moving in. And particularly what I'm thinking of is the Elder Avenue area, where I think that's being proposed more as a a housing area, or it's certainly got some cottage housing down there. So is there a view on how vehicles will move into this, particularly if they're large vehicles?
So a traffic study was conducted for this project, looking at what kind of new trip generation there there would be. And what what is interesting about it, and I would need to actually look at the the, go back to the secret document to check the numbers really quickly, unless the applicant can can address this quickly. That the number of truck trips generated by the project was actually surprisingly low. Another aspect of the project is that folks are not necessarily coming on a regular basis. The customers are not necessarily coming in and out on a regular basis to get to their storage, their storage pods, as you would in like a mini storage. Typically, people are, you know, they're putting their goods into the pod and then the pod is stored for a short time and then it's delivered to another location. You know, folks are moving to a new house or what have you. So the number of patrons accessing the site is lower than you might find at an indoor storage. As far as the specific numbers go, I would need to look that up. Do we want to see if Bert can answer?
Well, just it's really more of a question. Has 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 staff really thought about? We we have a narrow road on Elder Avenue and any large trucks going down that and mixing with people who might be walking would be, you know, a challenge. I'm just really thinking of the safety. So I'm just wondering if staff has given any, you know, matter. And I saw the, I think, I think seventy two trips a day, but it could be a lot less. But we are talking about larger vehicles and it's more about the circulation that could happen in that area. Part of, part of it at the moment, I think Elder Avenue has got some sidewalks. But it sounds like you, the 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 sort of circulation hasn't really been considered of the way that vehicles might move in presumably from one oh one or highway one one six.
Yeah, I'll just jump in, because we we have been thinking about that as a part of this site's development. And generally, shipping or our trucking routes are going to utilize signalized intersections. So Redwood Drive to Hellman to access one oh one and highway one sixteen going east. I do think, you know, folks who are headed west to Sebastopol, any type of use that's utilizing the industrial, this part of the industrial part of town will likely use Alder, just because it's a right hand turn. But as we see those sites develop, to your point, Vice Chair, we are requiring bike lanes, parking and sidewalks with planner strips to be incorporated into the frontage of Alder. So that way, we do get a full multimodal transportation network installed onto Alder. If that helps.
And then, okay, yeah, just just wanted to to check out on that because it's a, I mean, while it may be a low level, it's still, we we want, we don't want that safety element. We're talking about safety a lot and how to keep pedestrians from mixing. And that is a prime area for, at the moment at least, for people being able to get out and exercise and do walks and stuff. One, one other question that more relates into the, is this a time to ask a question about the MNND?
Yes.
So just then, it's a curious curiosity question, really. On packet page sixty one, table six, there's an identification of the the pollutions, pollutants, the four pollutants that are being discussed can be up to ten tons, fifteen tons a year. And I'm just wondering, is that actually, that much pollution is really allowed? Spread out over a year, fifty four pounds a day, I think. But for a small particle, PM two point five, that would be an awful lot of, I know we're not meeting it. I mean, I know that the project is well within it, but it's just, is that, is that really what the air quality district? That's a value that is taken from the air quality districts, air quality values or analysis?
That's, yes, that's our understanding. When we, when we, we looked up, you know, in preparing the document, we did look at at current standards from the air district and, you know, verified that those numbers, you know, fit, so.
Okay, good, because it just seems an awful lot of of pollution for a very small particle, PM two point five and PM ten on there. So good, okay, well, that was just my my general questions to staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Commissioner Savage with a question.
Thank you, Sylvia. In the use permit, it calls out the allowing for the stacking of the pods outside. And in earlier comments, it sounds like operationally, they just intend to stack three or twenty four feet. Is there somewhere that limits the height of those, that they can't go over twenty four feet?
Yes. Yeah, that's that's part of the the conditions of for the project, the conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have, if we have no other commissioner questions, we can go on to the presentation by Mr. Sandell.
Okay, I believe I have a, oh, there we go. Before I get started, good evening, commissioners and everybody on this call. And before I start, I want to express my sincere thanks to the planning commissioners, to Autumn Bust and all, to Carrie Pajon, who's been helping us a tremendous amount, and to Director Craig Scott, who we've been working with over a year now. You know, I, I've worked in an awful lot of cities around Bay Area. And this commission's willingness to here, have a special meeting for this project is quite humbling. And I think it's a real sign of this city's willingness to work in partnership with folks like us that are trying to do the right thing and get things done. So it's incredibly appreciated, thank you. Having said that, I'd like to get on to the presentation and I could, I'll, I guess I'll take questions at the end or however you'd like. So if we could, next slide, please.
One moment.
There we go, thank you. So I apologize for the delay. So as Autumn or Planner Bust mentioned, this is the second building of a two building project. The roughly fifty thousand square foot building one was approved by the city back in October. And we've been working on it since then. It's a little farther ahead than the slide when I submitted this PowerPoint package. The exterior panels, the installation had not started. We're about seventy five percent done right now. So we've made really good project, progress. Next slide, please. So on this call, we've got our project architect, Kevin O'Malley. Our biologist was invited. I don't see her, she might be having some technical problems. And so hopefully I can address any questions you might have. Our civil engineer, principal engineer was supposed to be on the call also. I I don't see him, but maybe I'm just not picking him up. And our landscape architect is on the call, not on the call. We have all the other professionals, oh, there's Kevin, all all the other professionals. They provided the studies and reports associated with the secret document. So next slide. So the the benefits, I I think, you know, I try to put myself in the planning commissioners' chairs. And I think that what this project does is it builds out, I believe this is one of the last parcels in the Candy Business Park. It completes that, a couple of nice projects that have good circulation. We've got substantial fees that will be paid to the city of Katari. Director Noah House suggested that I include a cul-de-sac that I objected to at first. But I'll tell you, Director House, the, what's happened is we've been building this thing is I cannot tell you the amount of truck traffic that enters our property just trying to turn around. And the more I'm out there, the more I realize that that's a, while expensive, it's a, it's a nice add and an important add for the city. As noted here, that was actually committed to as part of building one, nevertheless, it's part of the project. So there'll be a, an important increase in property taxes. And then we've got jobs, not only during construction, but upon occupancy and and really long term at this site. Next slide, please. So the construction schedule, our our goal is to have the initial grubbing of the site take place as soon as possible. We've done October fifteenth cutoff. We've got some material that is staged on the building one site that will relocate to the building site to immediately after it's cleared. We'll then take a pause and see where we are with weather. It's quite difficult to build labs and do earthwork and do the geotechnical activities during heavy rains. But if we have fair weather, we'll continue with the the grading work. If we have a wet winter, which I actually would love, we'll go ahead and that'll push us back several months. So this project will complete sometime towards the end of, between September of two thousand twenty three and February of two thousand twenty four. Next slide, please. Right, so Planner Bust talked about Fish and Wildlife. We have been working closely with them. We now have a year of experience administering an incidental take permit. We have a very good rapport with them. I think they feel that we're good operators. We've made some mistakes, we've corrected those mistakes. We have a great understanding with them. They are prepared and ready to issue our ITP as soon as they are, if we're able to get the secret document approved at this meeting, they're ready to go. Just by way of background, the costs associated with the mitigation for Tiger Salamanders for just building two will be somewhere between a million and one point four million. And I'm working out the details right now. We, what we have to do is buy credits at a mitigation bank. So let's see, I already talked about the October fifteenth cutoff. So next slide, please. Yeah, you know, I I'd like to interrupt. There's some, a couple of matters I want to bring to the attention of the planning commission that I don't have a slide for. But one of them had to do with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Planner Bust noted that there's some wetlands on the south side of the property. And our original design had our area of development coming right up to that, those wetlands. And that was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. But the Regional Water Quality Control Board really wanted a twenty five foot setback from those wetlands. And so we worked very closely with them. We modified our plans. And what you see before you today include the absolute twenty five foot minimum setback from those wetlands. And we had to do some things with fire and other things that were approved by by the Rancho Adobe Fire District. But anyway, I wanted to touch on that, that that was an important part of the process. In any event, the the tenant that would occupy both building one and building two is a moving and storage company. Our clients are never allowed in the warehouse. The process is that they, excuse me, make arrangements seventy two hours in advance. A pod is pulled out of the warehouse. It's quite complicated, as you can appreciate, because the warehouse is full of these. They set it in a, in a, in a staging area. The customer pulls their materials and then the pod is turned. This particular pods entity is moving there up in Santa Rosa right now. And they'll be relocating to this facility as soon as we, as soon as we get it built. And I've got a twelve year relationship with pods. They've been a tenant of mine and a property in Benicia. So next slide, please. So anyway, this is just a little bit about me. I'm a, I I live in Sonoma County. I live in the beautiful city of Geyserville. I'm an engineer and have been doing this for quite a while, mostly here in Northern California. This entity is an entity owned by my wife and me. We created it and she's also an engineer. She's not active in the business, but she's part of fifty percent owner. And then our son Calvin Sandell, who's a Cal Poly engineer, has been working on this since inception. And finally, our view is that this is a long term commitment to own this property. We like being here, we want to be here, and those are our plans. So I'd I'd like the, our project architect to talk a little bit about some of the design review elements. That's, that'd be the next slide. But happy to take questions now or hold until Kevin O'Malley is able to. But I'm happy to take questions now or hold until um, Kevin O'Malley is able to speak. I'll, I'll handle, however you'd like.
Uh, maybe we'll wait until the presentation conclusion and then we'll come back with questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm uh, Kevin O'Malley, as Bert said. You can probably skip to the next slide. I don't think I have. I think you've seen the slide. You know where it is. So I'll, I'll skip over this slide too. We'll just skip right to the, there we go, the overall site plan. So as, uh, just briefly, as Bert um, had mentioned, uh, we had worked with the water agency to uh, reduce the width of the road on the south side of the building. Um, this building, as part of its site design, along with building one, is required to have a fire department, emergency vehicle access all the way around the building. It's a, what's considered a high pile storage building, meaning that it has goods stored above twelve feet. And as part of that, there's specific section of the fire code that we have to meet requirements for access around the building as, for particular access as well as uh, man doors around the perimeter have to be spaced every so often to allow fire department access. Um, just one of the unique features of this, of these buildings is why Bert is building them because they're, they're um, they have a high pile storage element, which is hard to come by um, for something of this height uh, in the county. So additionally, we worked with uh, Noah, we know, and climbing staff, Autumn, that uh, we wanna work at screening of these outdoor areas uh, from view the best we can. And so as we did in phase one or building one, we had screening on the south side of the site for the west, this more, more densely planted uh, trees and vegetation on that south portion of the site for the west side of the building, the screen outdoor storage area. We've continued that along the south in our buffer of space between the wetlands and the access road on site. And so we've continued that across, uh, all the way across the south portion of the site and then specifically around, up and around the wetlands and the western portion of the site. Uh, there is a bike trail off the property. And so we've tried to kind of densely plant, as you can kind of tell from the site plan, all along that south and west, and then even also the north portion of that outdoor storage area going across and coming back to the building. And then we, we thin those trees out a little bit, not a whole lot, but a little bit, and coming across the north side of the second building. So just wanted to point out the screening. Um, as Autumn had mentioned, we have an eight-foot fence. And then we are using, I think we um, in our landscape, I can talk about this, but originally, I think in the first approval, we talked redwood trees. I think they, at the time of building permits, they got changed to a um, cedar tree that's just as fast growing, but consumes far less uh, water in order to establish their, their growth and their height. Um, we can jump to the next slide. And this is just as representative, um, elevation of the building. This is the east side. It's very similar basically to what we did in, in building one. We have uh, an insulated metal panel exterior. We're using about three different panel types or what they call panel profiles, uh, not only color, but they have different textures on them uh, to create the look that you see there where we've got the, a wainscot base and then kind of a cornice element across the top and accentuating the corners with those panels. That's a panel on top of the the main building insulated panel. And then we accentuate the corners where um, the building is the, is designed as is, was building one to, he split down the middle. Again, since it's a long-term hold for the owner, he's looking at, you know, look at having a building that um, could work for multiple tenants down the road. And so it's designed to be split in half, uh, potentially for a tenant, different tenants. And so we've allowed for space in the southeast and southwest corners as office space and entrances. And that's why we bumped those panels up a little bit taller. Uh, we maxed out the height limit and then we used the three-foot mechanical screen allowance, um, which is where we would have likely, we've gotten out of units for conditioning of office areas in those corners. And then we just provided some finessration at, at that storefront glass at the entrances and at uh, roll-up doors, at the loading docks, um, and at the man doors around the building. Uh, just between the man doors and the transom windows, we have some awning elements that just trying to provide some finessration around the building. Uh, and the building has uh, skylights. Trying to use day lighting as much as we can. It's a pretty low energy use building, as you might imagine, um, as a warehouse space would be. But skylights and upper windows and clerestory windows in there for daylighting. Man doors, as I mentioned, are serving as both exiting from the warehouse as well as fire access doors are required into the high pile storage. And I think that about covers everything on.
Kevin, may I add one, one thing, please? Um, I didn't touch on it, and that is that um, we are installing um, a uh, solar panel system on building one. Solar generation of uh, clean energy is very important to me. And that system will really basically match our power needs at this time. And in the future, if we have different types of tenants, we've designed both buildings so that the roof can accommodate additional uh, panels, so we can put in new systems or grow, grow what we have. So that's something I, I wanted to make sure the commissioners knew about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll close with one last comment on the, on the building height. And I know we touched on this on building one, but these are fairly unique buildings. Um, you're, because the tenant has a requirement for a thirty-four-foot clear height. And you really just can't find that. Uh, that's, that's not a typical thing. Most warehouse buildings are working with about a twenty-foot clear height. And so hence the requirement to, to build a building specifically for this tenant that also has flexibility for Bert as the owner to have it for future uses, but they, they're requiring a thirty-four-foot clear height. So that's why we have kind of employed the use of a parapet system like we did in their building one and have the roof hidden behind it. Uh, we've actually got a, three gables that you can't see going on behind that uh, parapet around the building in order to keep the roof pitch and, and drop in the pitch of the roof shallow so that we can maintain that clear height across the building. That concludes what I have.
Thank you. And now we will go to the commission and see if any of the commissioners have questions for um, the developer and the architect. Vice Chair Hancock.
There we go. Take me off mute and stuff. Well, um, really appreciate the presentation and the work, and um, I've certainly been in that situation where I've been traveling around um, in part of my career, moving different places, and I can see how this is um, sort of pretty useful. So I also appreciate it that you worked with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I mean, the, it's just a hard problem. I mean, it's a challenge with all the wetlands that have been filled in. So uh, appreciate it that you're making the effort there or probably being heavily asked, required to do it, but um, it's uh, interesting to hear about it. One of the um, questions though, maybe generally about the business side. If somebody was to abandon one of the pods, not pay the bill or whatever, how would you go about managing? Or who would own that management of, of making sure the pod was successfully um, and legally cleared, cleaned?
Vice Chair Hancock, thank you for the question. Um, I really don't, I really don't know. I, I, I'm not that involved with their internal business. Um, so I would just be speculating, but I, I must as assume that that happens, right? They've got operations around the country and I, I really can't, I really can't tell you, but I would, I could only assume that there must be some mechanism where if someone defaults, eventually they I don't know what they do. I, I, I just, I can't comment. I'm sorry. I don't have a good answer for you.
Okay. I mean, the reason why I'm asking of it, of course, is, is that there is a, um, wouldn't want it all to be cleaned out on site if there was anything hazardous in there with a waterway that's nearby. So um, that might be just something that I, I guess should be, I would think, looked at, possibly written into any contracts so that you don't get landed, handed, you know, left with that. But anyway, that was just a question that I had there. I do appreciate that the architecture side or the landscaping, that you're, you're going to try and do something with that edge. I have walked a lot around that um, Washoe Creek, and it is quite a a beautiful way of introducing people, people locally to the west side um, of um, Katati. Um, that whole area and the way it stretches out and then connects with other paths that go on the other side of the roads that are further along. So there is a, there is a potential path all the way along that Laguna. That is going to be very visible to, to residents for a walking place. So I think that's um, appreciate, appreciate the work and presenting it and um, yeah, October fifteenth is coming up fast if there's any storms that are coming up, but I think that's all I've got to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll go to Commissioner Murphy next.
Thank you. Um, and thanks for all the information. It's very helpful to have it us walk through it in addition to what we get in advance of the meeting. Um, this may be a, a more of a question for staff. I'm not sure, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around the the sig, the environmental significance or impacts of building two with the understanding that building one has already been approved and we're moving forward with it. So I guess I'm, if I could just, if there's a way to maybe summarize, um, you know, in general, what are the additional impacts to putting that second building there when we're already obviously disrupting the area and we've addressed those concerns with the approval of building one?
So uh, so I will say, so as was, you know, mentioned earlier, the related, the, one of the bigger impacts would be traffic impacts um, on the, on the surrounding area. And um, the number of trips generated by building two relative to building one was something like a, you know, a half or a third, I believe, that that the, the primary driver of trips would be the activity in building one. Um, the traffic study uh, for the, for building one estimates that about six additional, let's see, six additional trips in the AM peak hour and six additional trips in the PM hour uh, would be generated by, by building two. So it's, you know, it's a fairly marginal um, increase, I think. In, I don't know, Bert, if you can speak to some of the um, the findings from the, the um, the air quality. You know, that would be one other area of impact, and certainly the biological impacts, you know, the impacts to the tiger salamander habitat area.
Sure. Um, thank you, Autumn. I um, I, I, I don't feel, um, although I am an engineer, I don't feel qualified to address the um, the air quality aspects. Um, unfortunately, I did not invite that particular consultant to join us um, for this meeting. But I, I do know, having reviewed those documents in detail, that um, we certainly meet um, the um, air quality standards across governmental entities. I, what I can talk a little bit about is the tiger salamander. Without going to too much detail, what we're required to do is install an exclusion fence around the perimeter of the area of development. And there's some one-way ports there so that tiger salamanders can, can leave, but they can't get back in. And then around the perimeter, there's a series of um, boards that are placed on the ground to provide shelter. And it allows the biologist scenario to kind of find the tiger salamanders. And over the course of the last year, we've not had one tiger salamander spotting on building one. So um, based on that, the, the the, the, you know, it's, we, we aren't seeing a lot of tiger salamanders out there. And on top of that, we'll be going through the mitigation process uh, and purchasing credits so that the um, tiger salamanders are more than um, mitigated for. So I Commissioner Murphy, I, I, I hope that answers your question. I'm happy to try again if you'd like.
No, no, I, I, I think that's getting to, you know, what I was trying to better understand. I, I had a couple others, though. For the incidental take permit, is, was that a requirement just for this building too, or was that something that had to take place for building one as well?
Yes, it takes, it took place for building one as well, and we're still operating under that take permit.
Got it. Okay. And then for the um, for the traffic study, when, when we mentioned the potential for possibly bringing in other um, tenants or maybe changing tenants out in the future, is there concern at all with the traffic study still being relevant, or would there be a new traffic study performed if the tenants in that building were to change significantly?
Well, so this uh, this traffic study is really just related to this, this project, this use permit. Uh, so uh, potentially depending on what type of, of use would, might come in later on, uh, potentially there would be a need for another permit. I don't know if um, if Noah can speak to that a little bit more, but this, this is specifically for the land use, which is uh, you know, the ware, indoor warehousing without, with uh, with indoor storage.
Yeah, I would just add, so um, use permits are intended for uses that the city might find acceptable, but may need to condition how they operate in order to minimize their impacts. And those conditions uh, or that review also includes an environmental review. And so to your point, if if a different use proposed to move in here that had the potential to significantly increase vehicle traffic, uh, it would likely be uh, intensive use that required a use permit, and that would trigger another environmental review to make sure that use minimized its impacts and mitigated them. And if traffic was one of those potential impacts, it would be addressed.
Got it. Thank you. Um, and then last question was just on the um, forty-foot height requirement, um, or staying underneath the forty-foot height requirement. Being out in that area, I had a little bit of a hard time visualizing the building itself, but um, how common is our other buildings in that area um, in being close to that threshold? With, basically, I'm just wondering, does this stand out significantly being close to forty feet, or uh, is it somewhat similar to our other buildings in the industrial zone?
From my, my visits to the site, I think it, it's very similar in sort of scale and, and, and massing to the other buildings in the, in the area. Noah, have you, do you know what the heights might be on some of those? I don't know if they, how long those buildings have been there and.
Yeah. I don't, I, I don't look at, I don't know the specific heights of the adjacent buildings. I do think this building will be slightly higher than some of those adjacent ones. Uh, but that was one of our main concerns as we, you know, engaged with the applicant and his architect over a year ago. Both the size and scale of the building and then also the outdoor storage were the two things we really pushed them to, do everything they could to address. Obviously, I think setting the building back, you know, from any vantage point other than driving right to it, you're not really gonna see it uh, from any other public vantage point. And when you do, it will either have significantly sized buildings between you and it, or larger trees, which they uh, we, the city staff really required and they agreed to plant to try to s- uh, offset some of that scale issue. Uh, I think it is a good point to uh, ask. Uh, but I do think um, staff pushed pretty hard on the applicant and they, they were uh, responsive to the concerns that we raised.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those were all my questions.
Thank you. Um, and I want to give an opportunity. I don't know if Commissioner Savage had any additional questions. I know he asked something earlier. I just want to give him an opportunity to get any additional questions.
No, I do not, Sylvia. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to say um, thank you to the developer for explaining and, and being kind of responsive to the fishing game concerns regarding the uh, bird nesting element. So I wanted to thank them for that. And um, some, I guess, questions and concerns that I had have already been answered, especially in regards to, we already have building one, this is building two. I was concerned about um, the Laguna, the creeks nearby and any kind of runoff or anything, but that was already kind of uh, it looks like it was already addressed, and I saw that it was also restated in the building two um, procedures. And so I appreciate that as well. Uh, the height limits, are they both building one and two? Do they have the same height limits, or is one higher than the other? I wasn't sure about that. I did go out uh, over the weekend and I saw the building is more, uh, further constructed than what the picture that the developer had in his background. I did see that there was a lot of work going on when I went by there. So that's one question that I have. The height, is it the same, or is the second building higher? And then I also. And then I also appreciate that staff recommended the cul-de-sac because I also, while I was there, saw all the big trucks that were pulling out of the businesses right next to, and I just kind of parked on the side. So I was kind of trying to get out of there before that big truck came my way because I just wasn't sure if there was enough room. But that's something that I noticed when I went to go visit. And I also, what Commissioner, what Vice Chair Hancock said about Alder Lane. I know that there's that one where that cottage housing is, but then there's also the Alder Lane that goes into the commercial industrial area. And I don't know if if that's a set route that they'll be taking from Redwood to Helman to Alder to Blodgett, or will they cut through the the housing, the more residential area? That's another question that I have, whether there's any kind of recommendations or or anything in in the kind of guidelines that are being said as far as what routes to take. So I I know I just asked a few questions, but I'm hoping that I can get, I'm just gonna know what you're, what you're thinking or along what lines we're going with this.
Well, just to address the the question of the height, yes, the 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 building one is also forty feet. And the same height restriction is in place, you know, throughout the property. It's all zone CI, commercial industrial, which has the forty foot limit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
What about the question, is there any kind of insight into a path for the trucks to kind of move in that area? Or is it pretty open, like Alder Alder Lane has like a residential area where the townhomes and the cottage housing is, and then they have the business more in the commercial industrial area. So I was kind of wondering if there's any kind of guidelines for trucks, or do they, is it pretty much open to to them using either part of Alder Lane?
I'm not aware of that, be there being any trucking route, specific trucking route in that area. Noah, is that is that accurate?
Yeah, I I I'm not aware of a designated trucking route. I do know we have some in the city. I'm not sure on the west side of town where it would be. But generally, those types of, the larger vehicles tend to like to utilize signalized intersections. And getting out to the highway, the easiest way to do that is going to be following the signalized intersections. That being said, it is a public street and some people may occasionally take that Alder the less traveled way, but we anticipate a majority of traffic will come off of Redwood onto Helman.
Okay, and did any of the commissioners have any additional questions before? I believe we go to the public, right? Because it is a public hearing. Okay, so any other additional questions before you go to public to the public? Okay, so why don't we see if there's anyone in the public that wants to make any comments on this item?
To attendees tonight, please use the raise hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. There's no public comment.
Okay, thank you. So do any commissioners have any additional questions before we move forward with the next step of moving the resolutions? Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, I've got one more question to start, and really just a document technicality comes up periodically. In the back on the fire district, what exact fire district should be referenced in the document? We do have a reference to the Petaluma Fire Prevention Bureau. I know that we're part of the, I think, the Adobe fire district. So what's the exact technical term that should be used there?
Our district is the Rancho Adobe Fire District.
Do you, do you think it would be makes make it more workable for the documents if that was defined in one place right up front and then when there's any differences with the consultants, all they have to do is change one place?
Sorry, I'm not entirely following.
Well, we've just got a number of references in the document to a Petaluma Fire Prevention Bureau and then another Fire Prevention Bureau. And really seems like the technical term, since this is a legal document, is the Rancho Adobe Fire District. So if that was just defined once right up front, then all the following references to to the fire district wouldn't have to be changed all the time. I mean, it just comes up time and time again in these documents that we're we're looking at. So we either we either completely ignore it or ask them to come up with a way that works for them and works for the legal document.
Yes, I I absolutely agree with you. And I, can you, can you, I'm not, I have not seen the reference to the Petaluma fire.
On page five ninety-six.
Five ninety-six, okay.
And then there's a few other references to a Fire Prevention Bureau on paragraph seventy-three and then seventy-four, it goes back to Rancho Adobe Fire Prevention. And I mean, it's all
Okay.
It's all fairly semantic. I mean,
Yeah.
we know here what they're, what's going on, that they're cutting and pasting.
Right.
But it would be nice if they could, you know, I'm just thinking of a solution maybe to suggest to them that if they could define it once up front and just change one location.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. I I completely agree with you. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll certainly look into that and catching that in the in the, is the consultant report that we're referring to.
Right. And stuff. And I think the, yeah, I mean, I, I, it's on the whole, it's very good, but it's and I very much appreciate the acronyms being spelled out in part of the document, so it's easy to reference on that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. That's that's the only comment I've got on the whole document, so.
And what I wanted to mention before we go to reviewing the resolutions is that there's two. The first one is for the review and the use permit to allow the construction of the second building. And the second one is the the mitigated negative declaration and the MM RP resolution. But for that one, we have an updated one, a revised one that was sent out by staff. So I just want to make sure that that the commissioners, that we have a revised one that staff sent out to, that includes the comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife. So if there's no other questions, someone want to make a, on the first resolution, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Let me make sure here that I'm just pulling up the revised one. So this would be a motion for the use permit and
That's the first one.
I will make a motion to support the resolution of the Katati City. I might be on the wrong one, actually.
We usually do the MND first. But I don't know whether that, that's.
It is, it is important. That's correct. So the environmental document should always be done first. And thank you, Vice Chair Hancock, for pointing that up.
Thank you.
I will do that first then. Or I will, I will make a motion for for the environmental. Sorry, let me move through this and just make sure I'm looking at the right one. I had it pulled up a second ago. Yes, I think this is it. Okay. Scroll back up. So I will make a motion to support the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Katati adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Sandell Distribution Warehouse Building Two, project project located at three eight zero Blodgett Street and making the required findings pursuant of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Can we get a roll call on this, please?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, that passes on four with one absence. And then we'll go to the other resolution. This is a resolution for the use permit to allow the construction of building two. Does someone want to make that motion?
Yes, I'll make it. So a resolution of the Katati City Council approving preliminary final design review and use permit. Shouldn't this be a review, a resolution of the Planning Commission?
It absolutely is a resolution of the Planning Commission.
Okay, resolution of the, I'm maybe just reading the introduction there, but resolution of the Planning Commission approving preliminary final design review and a use permit to allow the construction of the Sandell Distribution Warehouse Building Two, thirty-five thousand five hundred square feet in size to be used by a moving and storage company with the outdoor storage of portable storage containers on an eight-point-four-eight acre vacant parcel located at three eighty Blodgett Street, PA twenty-two dash oh three and APN oh four six oh seven three oh oh six with the changes to with the correct fire department references in the document.
Thank you. And then the title, wait.
Yes, and correction of the title. Yeah, I'm reading it from the matters at hand. Maybe the actual resolution is slightly different, but with the change, yes, for the Planning Commission.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes, and that passes with the four with one absent. Thank you very much. So thank you for the presentation, Mr. Sandell and 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 others. And we will now move on to the next item. We have a thirty-day public review of the draft housing element update.
Thank you, Chair Lemus, members of the commission. Yeah, welcome to the presentation of the draft twenty twenty-three housing element update. We've been talking about this for a long time and we're moving into the final stages, so really excited about it. It is worth noting that to, we are in the thirty-day public review and comment period, which began on September twenty-seventh and runs through October twenty-seventh of this year. And I just also want to know that this, there is no legal requirement to hold a meeting during this public review and comment period, but tonight's effort is really just to try to raise the awareness in the community of this effort. We did send out a notice to our email list of everyone who's interested in housing items. They've been signing up. We have a housing interest list that's available on the city's housing page. And so we did notify everyone of this. We have been getting some public comments, but we thought it would be appropriate to hold a discussion with the commission and the council, just to briefly talk about it. And that's the intent of today. Again, with the goal of raising awareness. And we'll go to the next slide. So briefly, you know, as I mentioned, we've been talking about housing and the housing element update for a long time. There's been a significant amount of change through the legislature, really over the last five years. But starting in two thousand nineteen, it it really started to increase the amount of legislation. There's been things that change how we process applications, how we decide applications as as local governments, changes to the Housing Accountability Act. There's been passing of legislation such as SB thirty-five that allow certain types of projects to go through without sequel review or any discretion. So some decisions are are not being made by the Planning Commission or City Council anymore. Cities cannot downzone properties and the list, you know, is pretty extensive as the commission's aware of. But in two thousand nineteen, we held a workshop to talk about these pending changes and to to try to foreshadow some of the things that we were going to be discussing and proposing in the housing element. That's before the public today. And we did some survey work just to hear people's general input on housing and housing issues. We added to that through the December twenty twenty and early twenty-one when we were doing the objective design guidelines that the commission reviewed and participated in and and some of that other SB two funded work. So just, I just really want to point out that a lot of the background work that we've been doing has been ongoing for a number of years and really helped to inform this document. As you all are well aware, we got our regional housing needs assessment or allocation in November of twenty twenty-one. And then about a year after that, we formally kicked off the housing element process. Our consultant, Jane Riley, is here, just in case there's any technical questions I can't handle. And and Fourleaf and her firm has really been instrumental in getting this document to where we are today. And as identified, we are in the thirty-day public review period. We'll go to the next slide. So this slide, some of you who attended that workshop, I presented it there three years ago, almost to the day, and it was highlighting some of the legislation that had been, was pending and had been passed, signed by the governor affecting housing development and processes we've talked about. Interestingly, the same author came up with another graphic to highlight the twenty twenty-two housing legislation. And Carrie, if you go to the next slide, you'll see the the pace of legislation has not slowed. And so while these were all proposed and on the legislative docket in March of twenty twenty-two, Carrie, you have the next slide. And these are the ones that pass. So I just wanted to highlight kind of the ongoing kind of onslaught of of legislation that affects what we do here in the department and the things and the processes that we utilize to bring projects before the commission. And the thing, the interesting thing about all this legislation is whether it's the City of Katati or the City of Los Angeles, we all have to respond to all of these these regulations. And so as a small city, you know, sometimes it's a challenge, but you as the commission are really on the cutting edge of of a lot of this stuff. I just wanted to highlight it. And then we'll go to the next slide. Which you all rec, you will recognize this as well if you're at the the workshop, and it's just, it's a legislative frenzy and it hasn't slowed down since we started really talking about this in two thousand nineteen. So we're going to the next slide. Kind of just highlighting some of the themes and trends of the housing element update. Generally, we're continuing on our efforts and building on our successes. And it's been informed by a very substantial technical background report. So beginning on packet page six ninety-four is the technical background report. There's been a huge amount of analysis, both quantitative analysis of demographic trends, but then also some quantitative analysis of actual people's lived experiences. We did a lot of survey work. We talked to a lot of service providers. And we really tried to cast a broad net so where we could really hear from all aspects of the community. And really highlighting folks who traditionally are not represented in our process. And it was really critical that we do that this year, not only because it's the right thing to do, but because the state is really paying attention and is ratcheting up their expectations with how we respond to that list of regulations that we all just talked about. And so I, you know, I'm really happy to highlight that, beginning on page six thirty-eight of the packet, it really discusses our current two thousand fifteen programs and really highlights that we've been able to make some serious progress over the last, the cycle and and make some progress on addressing our housing element, or I'm sorry, our housing needs. But we haven't been perfect and there's still a lot of work to do, as everyone's aware. And so the trend of this or the theme of this update is to really build on that effort. Learn from the things that we did well and the things we didn't do well in the past and simplify some of our programs, clarify our objectives. So that way, we really know as we move forward where we're being successful and where we maybe can continue to work. Obviously, we're responding to many of the updates that are in all of that legislation I highlighted. And the fact that the Department of Housing and Community Development is is really expanded their oversight of this process and our document itself. And so they have a lot of high expectations. And we're trying to also reuse some of the more appropriate sites for housing that did not end up developing over the last cycle to meet our growth projections for the next cycle. And as the commission's aware, we were allocated two hundred and thirty-four housing units spread across, you know, all spectrums of the income levels. But in order to have your sort of, your housing elements certified, you have to demonstrate that you can build a pretty significant amount of units beyond just the two hundred and thirty-four. Because not all those properties are going to develop, not all that projected units on one parcel will will be realized. And so you have to kind of build in a buffer. And we were able to project a very substantial buffer in potential housing development. And I I do foresee that we will be able to meet arena into the coming years. And then there's a lot of ongoing reporting that the commission's going to see. We have what's called our annual production report or APR. And that generally gets submitted to the state on April first. And that staff tries to present that to both the commission and the council before it gets submitted to the state, just to update everyone on where we are with meeting those targets, both the the actual Rena numbers, so how many units got built, but then also the programs and implementing those programs and how well we're doing along those those lines. One of the more interesting changes in the legislation is we're now also required to do that with the general plan. And we have been required to do it with the general plan for a few years. Katati was not able to complete those reports. However, we're working on the backlog and we do anticipate catching. Uh, however, we're working on the backlog and we do anticipate catching up this year. And be you, so the commission will see those uh, general plan, annual production reports, uh, or status reports also presented uh, in the coming months. We'll go to the next slide. Again, um, you know, this is the thirty day comment period. Uh, it ends on October twenty seventh of this year, and we're just trying to raise awareness. So we'd really love to hear from the community. Uh, if anyone has any comments on how they feel the the housing element could be changed or modified to meet their needs. Uh, they can submit their comments to cattati at the civic edge dot com. That's a email address. That our um, outreach consultant is managing and monitoring. Or they can provide their comments directly to us here at City Hall. Uh, mail, don't drop them off, or they could even email me directly at N H O U S H at cattati city dot org. Uh, at the conclusion of the comment period, we have a ten day period to respond to those comments, make any further changes that we need to to the document itself. And then we submit it to the state. So the Department of Housing and Community Development will review that. They have ninety days. Uh, their goal is to identify any shortfalls in our policies or programs or areas where we need to continue building. Uh, or working to meet their, what they see as a as an area that needs more attention. Uh, they, the public can continue to comment through that period and they can send their comments directly to the email address. Housing elements at H C D dot C A dot gov. Uh, at the conclusion of that ninety day period. The city uh, then responds to any comments that HCD has has provided, uh, updating the document to even make it more robust. Uh, and then we uh, complete the sequel analysis of any potential environmental impacts associated with our policies and programs. Uh, and then we we move into the the decision pop process, and that'll be a public hearing with the planning commission. Right now, we're looking at either February twentieth or March sixth. As the uh, the soonest dates that these that the meeting would be presented. And then the following date would be uh, March fourteenth or March twenty eighth to go to the city council. So people are trying to. Uh, schedule our calendars. Those would be the potential soonest dates for those decisions, and they will be at fully noticed public hearings. Uh, and and if all of those um. Processes are met, timelines are met, we will end up with a certified housing element at the end in early twenty twenty three. So go to the next slide. Uh, just a recommendation by the Community Development Department, the planning commission review the provided draft. Technical background report, identify any concerns or direction to the staff, take public comment, and then file the report for the future discussion at the public hearing. That concludes my presentation. The next slide just says that we are available for questions. Uh, and uh, I hope you all enjoyed some reading with the uh, large packet and and I do apologize for not getting it out a bit sooner. But I'm happy to chat and hear any comments or answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions on the housing element update or the technical report that was provided? I know that we have kind of reviewed this a few times before um, um, here. I did have a question. Um, I know that as I was kind of reviewing the last time, the the workshop that you had done in June, some of the questions that I had are. Um, there was, there was, for example, a program on cul culturally appropriate facilitation involvement. Limit code enforcement activities. And as I was kind of reviewing some of the different programs um, in the housing element. I was wondering if there is any kind of um, bilingual kind of or Spanish speaking kind of touch points. Like, for example, I was looking at the ADU, kind of like where if people have ADUs that are kind of out of compliance and they may not know. Are there certain things that are kind of um, that the city is looking at maybe providing in Spanish to um, to property owners or or members of our community? Um, I'm not necessarily saying that the whole thing, but there may be certain things of information to the public that maybe, for example. Um, in my regular line of work, there's some items that have to do with emergencies or health or or safety. That we make sure that we provide it in Spanish so that it's uh, accessible to everyone. Anyone? Have there been any of those items that have been identified?
Uh, that's an excellent question, and I really thank you for uh, raising it to uh, Chair Levis. So yes, we. We do intend to provide kind of uh, Spanish translation of summary. Documents to kind of give folks maybe like a one page summary of, you know, this is generally what this is, and here's the process to plug in. And if you have further questions or need attention. Then talk to staff. Uh, I, we have been uh, successful in hiring our first um. Spanish speaking uh, bilingual individual in City Hall with our last recruitment in the city manager's office. So that's been really helpful. Uh, and she's already been uh, assisting me and and community development with translation services, and she's offered those. City managers has offered to provide that across the city uh, services. And so we do plan to provide. Essentially summary sheets on the more high profile to topics such as. Uh, ADU um, forgiveness programs, ADU construction programs and summary elements as a way to try to ensure we address. Uh, the needs of all members of the community.
Hey, thank you. Um. Uh, Vice Chair Hancock, question?
Yes, hello. Um, I got a fairly general question and maybe. Maybe a little bit difficult. Um, I appreciate all the documents and. Doing this analysis, but what I'm also seeing in the city. Um, I mean, we're trying to do others like um, electric vehicles affordable. Make um, it more accessible and we're getting um, uh, you know, just. What is real, what's real stuffing on the ground? And particularly, I want to that. For any of these new builds, the current. Cost of an EV inspection is four fifty dollars per station. Would that still apply to all of these new builds, even though they might want to put in? Four, five of them? I mean, would the same fee apply for every EV station that is wanted to be put in?
Uh, that's a great question, Vice Chair. So a couple of things. Um. So the the way the fees are broken down in the fee schedule is like a one off. So it's like if you're going to come in and just get, you know, I I'm gonna, I need one electric vehicle permit and inspection. Uh, if you have a, to your point, like if I'm building a whole brand new project. And uh, electric vehicle infrastructure is just one small component of it. Then it gets wrapped into the overall permitting and inspection process. And you, there's huge economies of scale. That are um, created through that permit review and inspection process. Essentially, the cost for the city to go out and. And not only review all the plans associated with the infrastructure, but then go to the site, do the inspection, all that. Obviously, if it's a one type of permit, then. That cost needs to be spread across the entire permit versus if it's a broader permit that has multiple inspections, multiple uh, elements, then uh, the cost is driven down substantially. But I would also like to add that uh, there was an oversight on staff's part. When we first did the um, fee study estimate and 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 presented it. The council directed staff to reduce that cost to, I believe, two hundred dollars maximum. And so. We did not carry that direction through with the current draft. And so we are updating that, uh, and it will be on, I believe, the next council agenda to correct that. And we're also auditing our permits for the past year issued since that update, and we will be issuing refunds.
Okay, so that was, um, particularly you referencing that council meeting where I made a comment um, that the EV costing was four fifty dollars. Um, and it didn't seem to take into account multiple ones. So you're seeing that the the reference. That there was a previous discussion keeping lower, you found that.
Absolutely.
So I'd like insights. And I I referenced, it also came other meeting, uh, actually in Petaluma. Where a developer was talking about low cost. Um, portable housing, uh, and saying, well, just be careful what you specify for a project. Because if you specify that you want to have all of the um, the conduits there, does that mean that the the developer actually then has to do all the analysis to be able to provide all the infrastructure? To get in there. So so a question I've got on this, I mean, we'd like. Um, we're going, we're we've we've got a statement in the, by the governor that we and and legislation that says we need to have. Electric vehicles more widespread. We need to have, um, is a recent study also that said, well, gee, if everybody drives their vehicles to work and then comes. Home in the evening and plugs them into their low cost outlets. Or into their outlet pastor, the thing, we're gonna. Force problem with the network. We're gonna have electrical overloading just at the work, where, you know, just when everybody wants to use it. Whereas if we actually have all the businesses can also put in electrical. Um, charging. So you drive a back and plug air. You can charge at least half of what you have, and you can use the sunshine to do it. Um, so when we come with these fees, how are we going to address it so that, on the one hand. It can be um, relatively painless to to roll out. I mean, haven't got. At least you're you're saying now there isn't that high bar that there was. Um. That was previously better. If if somebody is going to put in twenty electric vehicles stations, will they get, how will that work as far as the fees?
Yeah, so in that case, the fee would be based on the cost of the work, and it's usually between one and five percent of the cost of the overall construction. So as the cost of the construction goes up, the the percentage of the of the permitting fee goes down. Um, just generally, because again, it gets the economies of scale issue that I talked about. Um. You know, I I don't believe the transition to an entirely new fuel system will be painless. Uh, but I do think there's.
Painless system.
Uh, yeah, exactly. And I and I do think uh, there's a lot of places where government can um. Try to minimize that pain, you know, to stick with the analogy. And so while the housing element is is more concerned about, you know, providing homes for folks. Uh, there are a lot of other things that we're talking about, uh, and we're we're going to be bringing the building code update to the city council at the next meeting. Uh, and so I it's just worth to, this is one piece of the puzzle, I would say. Uh, and we are looking to ask the council to set thresholds for EV chargers on multifamily and commercial businesses. Uh, as well as photovoltaic uh, thresholds on on those businesses and and uh, developments. Into the future to set a standard, because right now we typically ask folks to put them in, but there's not a set. Um, anticipated standard that that development, you know, it's like a formula. So we're trying to project that so that way folks. Can more build those hard costs into their pro formas, and they know what it's going to be as they go forward for development. And that's what I think we can do as government is. Try to uh, reduce the uncertainty in the development process and say, if you want to build in Cattati, this is what you have to do. And then the last point I want to make, which I think is a very excellent one to talk about. Some of you might recall when we took the cottage housing ordinance. Through the process, we were struggling with what's the appropriate amount of electric vehicle charging. Social or so uh, solar panel installations uh, as a. Uh, kind of requirement of these developments and as a concession for us as a city giving increased density to those projects. And one of the things that that came out of that discussion is. Um, exactly what Vice Chair Hancock is bringing up is. I think the conduit installation is one thing, and I think that would be fine, and it wouldn't trigger any downstream impacts on the grid to just install the conduit. But. If we were to require, just say, half of the units to be built with electric vehicle charging. The developer then would be required to upstream the entire PG and E transmission network. To get adequate capacity to just serve their development. The cost of that could actually just say, I can't even build anything because. The cost of that is is so much that it, my project will no longer pencil, no longer commercially viable. So I think we do need to take that into consideration as to how we're trying to set these standards and thresholds. And what we're trying to put on the individual projects versus bigger picture ways to maybe subsidize or supplement that through other methods.
Well, good, good to hear that it's actually um, being talked about, because that is a an enormous thing that um, you know, how the 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 network is going to be in in increased. Um, and I would bring up this, this uh, study I was just seeing recently um, on um. Basically, that if vehicles can charge during the day, i.e. go to work. Um, then um, it would provide a more distributed loading to the grid. Rather than, and and that, you know, it's all has to be easy. I I go to Sonoma and how do you find the vehicle charging that's out there? Um, and make it easy when you go to all the places. So I think we have an enormous amount of work. So I I appreciate. Appreciate the document and the the low cost, uh, the the aspect of the housing, but I also, I also think that we've got this. Other work where at times we're making it more difficult, more expensive. For um, uh, places to actually um, we're putting more requirements on them. And it's, it has to be where it's a good, it's a valuable requirement. For infrastructure and a requirement for safety as well, vehicle safety. We're making all of these problems and different, we've got a long history of problems, I think, with the loss of middle income housing. A separation of our housing between multifamily and single family. And so all of these are causing a lot of. Changes to the code, which I think on the whole is beneficial as what I hear elsewhere, but. I'm certainly having the the trouble working through all the the details. And then. Uh, as I mentioned, you know, seeing that one item on the agenda. Or the 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 cost which was wrong, so I'm glad I I highlighted it at the time. But anyway, thank you. That's my comment. Thank you, Chair. Bit bit elaborate.
No, that's that's fine. Any other questions from other commissioners? Uh, if I have anyone else, raise your hand. Um, I just want to confirm, um, Noah, that. The quantified objectives in the housing element, are those the same as Rena? And you might have already answered this question before. Are they the same as Rena needs or are they different?
Yeah, so Arena uh, is one of the quantified objectives, but just as another example, so in the, some of the new, and I'm sorry, I have to, I'm going to have to find it. But some of our new programs are 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 rather than being kind of generalized and say, you know. Um, some of them were very aspirational, but they didn't have any hard numbers. So. We're still remaining aspirational in some ways, but at where we can be, we want to actually set a quantified objective, say, we will try to do this, or we expect to do this. And have a hard number. So that way, I mean, not only is HCD requiring that, because that that's what they expect is to see, okay, you throw out a metric and then we want to see how you can meet it. But it does, it it allows us to really measure the the, how successful was this program? Because we projected a real number. And so that's, that's kind of the example of what we were trying to do. Um, is just make some of the soft language a little bit more quantified and specific.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, because I saw how you had broken it up into different program types and different types of housing, which I think was really helpful. To have, I think for accountability for the for the city and for us, you know, as we kind of move forward, I think it's good to kind of break it down that way. Um, so because it's a public review, at this point, I'll go to the public and see if there's any uh, question, any comments on the public.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raise hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. That'll be at the end of public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's no action on this one. I don't know if anyone had any additional questions or comments. Otherwise, we can move on to the next item. Okay, so we'll go to reports by staff.
Uh, thank you, Chair Lemus. Uh, just want to highlight, um, the American Planning Association Conference was held uh, last week. Uh, all the planning staff, so myself, um, John Paul Harry, senior planner and associate planner Autumn Bus, were all able to attend. Uh, I was very thankful that the city council set our budget. Uh, and just a reminder, um, they did essentially, uh, moving forward. Uh, we will anticipate funding to planning commissioners to be able to attend. And Commissioner Savage was a was uh, in attendance at the at the uh, conference as well. And and he did see uh, this. City staff, myself and senior planner Harry's present on the city's cottage housing uh, ordinance. Because I did find that that was a fairly innovative approach for small and medium sized cities, and we presented it. Standing room only in the room, and it was very well attended and appreciated. And a lot of people came up and and thanked us for sharing the work that you all participated in. And the city council was able to uh, support as we brought that ordinance through. Um, and then I just want to highlight for the the commission and the public that there will be no more commission meetings in October. Uh, so this meeting is intended to to kind of supplement for both October meetings. Uh, and so we'll get back on our normal schedule uh, in our, in November, but obviously just in time for the holidays. So just be aware of that and uh. Contact staff if you have any questions about meeting schedules. But with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, is there any reports by any commissioners? Uh, Vice Chair Hancock, do you have your hand up? I can't hear you.
Okay, yes, I got it there. Um, I did have it act up accidentally, but I will ask a question of staff perhaps rather than a a report and just um. We we launched the. Bicycle review, the pedestrian bicycle review last year with a solve uh, meetings. And nothing happened. I'm just wondering where the status is. Um, with all the other government in the city.
Yeah, so the county has received a grant and is moving forward with their bicycle pedestrian master plan. And we have talked to them about um, they essentially joining them in their process. They did the update for us last time. We've just been struggling to get traction primarily because of the amount of housing legislation that's just been. Uh, you know, we having to respond to and the amount of development interest. Uh, there's a lot. Uh, there's a lot of development projects in in the city right now. Um, and so not trying to make excuses, but just struggling for capacity. I will say the city council did allocate some funding for that program in this fiscal year, so we're just hitting the halfway point. Uh, you know, as it'll be, January first will be the halfway point of the fiscal year. And my plan is to kind of reevaluate where we are and set a process to be able to kick that off and get some traction on it, because I absolutely agree. Um, we've been trying to do it for too long now. We need to make some some real uh progress.
Well, uh, thank you for that. And just to, you know, highlight, if we're getting new builds coming in. It's good to make sure that people can walk to them and that we're clear about how that goes. And I know that's always a challenging thing, because staff always say that they don't do the infrastructure. But we have been getting these revenue streams from other places like Lowe's. So I would just hope that this could be planned in, that we can meet our goal, try and meet our goals more of making somewhere walkable. Uh, making it easier for people to get out and um get the exercise as well as starting to meet more environmental goals. So yeah, just my soapbox, I'll get off it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being tolerant.
Any other, excuse me, any other reports by commissioners? Now we'll move on to the next one. And I'll just kind of touch on these items we received after the agenda posted. There was two that staff sent to us, and we did refer to the the letter from the uh. Uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife and also the um mitigating negative declaration resolution revised that was sent out. That we pass as a resolution. Anything else, staff, that needs to be mentioned about those two items? No? Okay. Okay, so then we can go ahead and adjourn. So we're good for this evening. Well, thank you, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.